Good morning, everyone. We had so much fun yesterday. We've come back to do it all again today, but today is going to be more fun. I'm looking forward particularly to Film Commissioner Hadwin's report in a few moments, but before we get there, the TNRD acknowledges we connect with many First Nations communities across our vast regional district. Today, we are located on the Tecumluqshuaqutmac territory situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shuaqutmac Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with Tecumluqshuaqutmac and respect the territory and land on which we all gather today. We have the minutes of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three committee of the whole meeting. Director Stankey, Director Thorpe, seconds. Thank you. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. And we move into the promised report from Film Commissioner Terry Hadwin. Take it away.
Okay, good morning. We've been waiting for a while for this, so I'm very excited to be here this morning. So, thank you for your time here today. I'm going to try not to take up too much of it, but I'm hoping that you're going to be excited and riveted with all of the information that I'm going to be sharing with you today and that the time will go quickly. So for those of you who have forgotten, I am Terry Hadwin and I am the Film Commissioner of the Thompson-Nichol region. And I'm just here to share with you today for information purposes, the feasibility study that we, site feasibility study that we have done for a motion picture studio to be built within the Thompson-Nichol Regional District. I have here with me the consultation group that has worked on this study, All North, and we have James and Noah. They'll be here to answer any questions during the question and answer period at the very end. So this is what we are going to be going through here today, just in case you're wondering what the purpose is and also the progress done to date, which would be the business case study. And then the new information, which is what we are presenting here today, the site feasibility study, what our next steps are, and then the, again, the question and answer portion of the day. So why are we even bothering to talk about this? So film has been booming in our area, especially in the last three years. It's definitely grown over time and anytime that we have success, of course, we're wanting to build on that success. It just makes sense. What, what can we be doing to capitalize on the success that we've already had and move it even farther forward? Makes sense. So we anticipate that, or predict that we will be growing to being double this amount by next year. And here's a small sampling of some recent media articles of showing how business is booming and how other areas within the province and throughout the country are definitely working towards building more studio space and how high the demand is. These are just a sampling of some of the quotes that were within the business case document, which hasn't yet been released to the public. We were waiting for this supplementary piece, the site feasibility study, to release them in tandem. These are some of the quotes that some of film producers are saying about our area. I'm really wanting to maybe hone in on the middle one there, saying that Kamloops offers an attractive lifestyle. Being the TNRD, we are getting priced out of the Vancouver market and are looking for other places to go. Sustained film activity at a studio would certainly be a draw for many. So how does the studio provide that sustainability that we don't already have? The studio would provide an opportunity for potential TV shows to be shot in the area. That would be an ongoing sustainable job that people working in crew would know that they have a job day to day today. They wouldn't have to have a secondary job where they're not necessarily working in the things that they're passionate about in film and then not being able to go and work on the film projects when they do come into town because they have another job that they have to go to to pay their bills. So if we have a studio here in, in the TNRD, then we're able to keep those crew employed in the job that they want to be employed in. So about a year ago, we had a presentation by Nordacity and they presented to the board what they had found in the business case study. I selected this photo because some of the people here in the room may remember that presentation and I thought that he looked really smart and engaged in thought, so we can trust what he has to say in this study. So again, this, this document has not yet been released to the public. It gets released today with this site feasibility study, so it will be available online. I have hard copies in my office if anybody wants to stop by and please make sure that you're sharing them with anybody that you think might be potential investors. I can also let you know that this presentation is still available to be viewed on YouTube. I can tell you what the link is. I can tell you exactly when to start and stop. Not that the rest of the meeting wasn't riveting as well, but just for time constraints, I can tell you how you can actually tune in to see exactly what he had to say if you're wanting to learn a little bit more. So my five-second quick synapses of what happened in that hour-long presentation that he gave in a thirty-nine-page document, demand for studio space is high and the projections are for two point six million dollars in revenue if it's kept at one hundred percent capacity, which I believe it could be, and at highly competitive rates. So when I speak to highly competitive rates, it's almost half of what they do charge in Vancouver. So, and I just thought that this was a very nice visual to show if it was at eighty percent occupancy, sixty percent occupancy, and so on. And it also talks about the various utilities that could be rented on this space. It's not just the stages. All right, so a purpose-built best configuration includes ample area for parking. That's incredibly important. That's why some of the studios haven't been successful in the interior before. On-site office space, common areas, the two large stages, that's really very key that they have that huge amount of space. They recommend about twenty thousand square feet per stage, two mills or baby stages that could be rented out, five acres minimum. If there's more potential for growth in the future, that's, that's optimal. And the business case is based on bricks and mortar, not including land development and price. Which is exactly why we've done the site feasibility study. So they're going to want to know where exactly can this studio be built? And yes, we did kind of focus on some sites here within Kamloops, but it doesn't necessarily have to be within Kamloops. The reason why we focused on Kamloops is because we had Jake working here and when he was working here, he knew of potential sites that could be developed and why they were optimal. So that's kind of why we focused more on the Kamloops area, but it's not to say that it couldn't be in Merritt or elsewhere. They do recommend that it be close to as many amenities as possible. So the developers are going to ask, what are the advantages of each site? What are the challenges of each site? Can obstacles be mitigated? And how will land development and purchases estimates and other consider, I'm going to start that one over. How will land development and purchase estimates and other considerations factor into the overall budget and potential profits? So land and development costs are different here than they may be anywhere else in the country. And even just within B C. So if they're living in Vancouver, they may think that the cost of development might be far, far greater than it actually is. And so we hired All North to further research for potential types of land in Kamloops and what the cost might be to develop. So the site considerations included water and sanitation serviceability, internet and electricity access, site grading requirements, ease of transportation access, and other factors such as proximity to railroad tracks. The selection of the four properties of different types of development options included brownfield, greenfield, agriculture, and to Kamloops to Sequeu-. To provide representations of what a motion picture studio purpose-built facility might entail and cost. And to narrow it down to just four sites for review, a process of initial screening was held. We engaged in online and in-person stakeholder input sessions and a selection matrix was utilized. And it should be noted that the four sites that were listed in the study are not intended to represent actual development locations for the film studio. So if people see their actual address within this study, they shouldn't think that we're going to swoop in and offer them money to purchase that land. That's not actually the case. The actual site selection will need to be evaluated based on review of available properties at the time of development. So we're just kind of giving an overview of what it would cost to develop on brownfield, greenfield, agriculture, or potentially to Kamloops to Sequeu-. All right, and so these are the four sites that you can see within the document that's in front of you and that will be posted online later today. So there's the greenfield one that's in Campbell Creek, the brownfield that's also within Campbell Creek industrial area, the agriculture property, and that would require rezoning, which can be very complicated. So the study does kind of address what that would entail. And to Kamloops to Sequeu- industrial land on highway, on the Yellowhead Highway, which is currently undeveloped. So we got to the numbers finally, and so the sites average at around three million to develop and that does not include the purchase cost of the land. And then we also have a photo of what the schematics of what the building could actually look like. As you can see, there's a lot of parking and I love how that they have also addressed a lot of electronic vehicle parking. My recommendation, if a developer was to move forward with this, is to be as green, close to net zero as possible. That would make us that much more lucrative than the purpose-built studios that are already built in the lower mainland that are not potentially net zero. There are already net zero studios, but not all of them are. So this would make us have that little advantage if we were greener and more environmentally friendly and why wouldn't we just want to be more environmentally friendly? So now we have these two documents. What are our next steps? So the TNFC is now armed with all this information and data that we can now go and we can present them to potential investors and developers. We also have support from Venture Kamloops and others. And we're going to be out there letting them know that this is a viable place. We've got the business case study. We've done a lot of the legwork and the homework, showing them that they can build here. So we're armed and we're ready with all of that important information. And we've made it to the question and answer period already. I know that you guys are going to be just chock full of them, right?
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation and I hope that the, the new directors have had a chance to get up to speed on the presentation from last year. If not, I'm sure Director Hadwin would, would be happy to answer questions about that. But if anyone has any questions or comments, I'll start taking some, taking some names. It sound like the hall monitor here. All right, but Director Sow, anyone else want to put their hands up? Director Cotton, Sarai and Stamer. All right. Director Sow?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. So actually, this is, could be more question for TNRD staff in relation to this project. I know in the previous part meetings, I had discussed with TNRD staff about, you know, generating a list of potential properties within the TNRD owns. And this just pops into my mind that could be, you know, something we can piggyback off of and produce a list of properties within the TNRD that could be, might be suitable for one of these sites, perhaps. Yeah.
Yeah, through the chair, the Director Sow is, we had an eye to have this, had some discussions around available property that TNRD owns and our intent is to bring forward kind of a fulsome report and sort of a status of all the properties owned by the TNRD. And Terry is aware of those properties. I don't think any of them really are, suit this need, but to your question, yeah, those properties are, we're currently kind of compiling that and that'll come to the board later on this year.
Thank you. Director Houghton?
Yes, good presentation, Terry. I'm familiar with Pritner, all four of the sites, four very nice sites, two of them I work beside down on Dallas Drive. The one up by Sugarloaf I'm familiar with. The one on the Kamloops land, is this, is the land there owned by band or a band member?
I believe it's owned by the band, but I'm going to maybe bring in our wonderful representatives from All North to maybe speak to that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that right by fitting tractor, the new fitting tractor? Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sarai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just looking at the matrix that you did on the four properties, and thank you for your presentation, by the way. On the Kamloops Sequeu- it doesn't show the matrix number and I'm just wondering why that was not included.
Yeah, so the Kamloops.
Can you just turn on your mic? That's all good.
So the, the Kamloops site was a bit of a late addition to the report there. We had completed, so our original direction was to complete the selection for city of Kamloops sites within the main industrial areas within the city of Kamloops. Towards the middle to end of the study there, we did end up adding in the Kamloops site. So that one was selected slightly differently than the ones in the city of Kamloops. We work more hand-in-hand with Kamloops Economic Development to select a suitable site within their properties for that one. So we didn't go through the same selection matrix for that site.
supplemental, Madam Chair. So just on going forward on that, we have no idea what the cost of that land is or the assessed value of it right now?
No. Speaking with Kamloops, they may be able to share what their leasing rates for that property is, but that wasn't available at the time of the study.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Just trying to go through some of this stuff. Terry, do we have a total build-out cost? Like, I mean, this is just the land, but do we have a guesstimate of what we're looking at a full build-out?
Yes, we do. So I believe it was thirty-two point six million that was estimated in the business case study. Yeah, like ninety percent sure that that was the number, thirty-two point six.
And supplement, that was, those were numbers from last year?
Correct.
Director Morris?
I'm fine, thank you. Those were some of the key questions that I was going to pose. Thank you to the others.
Director Hall?
Yeah, Terry, great report. Thank you for presenting. Just curious, you said that you had the support of Venture Kamloops. Can you expand on the type of support that they're providing?
Yes, so my understanding is that they are already in communication with potential studio owners and potential investors that are interested in developing in this area. So they will be providing these documents to those people that they're already in communication with.
Does anyone else have any questions? Director Stamer?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on that then, I mean, we know what kind of money is available in the film industry right now. Do you see a potential, you know, maybe a Netflix or somebody like that, that would just like to be able to take over the whole thing?
That's the hope. That, that is the one hundred percent amazing. Would be great to have the actual producers come in and create that. However, it would be just as lucrative if we had potential investors that were wanting to support film or ones that are studio owners that know the business as well. So either would be completely amazing. There are also avenues similar to Calgary where it is public-owned, but we're leaning very much more to it being private.
I may have a supplement. I, I would imagine that we would have more flexibility if we had more of our own, you know, in it, in it, in as much as then we have more flexibility with independent filmmakers and those kinds of things versus just having one studio or entity that owns the whole thing.
Agreed.
If I, if I may, Miss Hadwin, I know you and I've had to talk about Mastermind Studios and I'd just like to maybe just have you tell the rest of the other directors about Mastermind and what they serve as they already provide and how we do have an existing studio in Kamloops, but how this new proposal would act in tandem with Mastermind.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to address that. Yes, so we do have a studio here in Kamloops. The, what we're hearing from the productions that are coming to the area is it's just not large enough. So we're talking about four thousand square feet in comparison to twenty thousand square feet. So if a TV production, for example, was to come here, they could build an entire house within the space of the new studio that we're, we're talking about, whereas they might be only able to build one or two rooms at Mastermind Studio. So the hope is that we do not put Peter out of business. Obviously, we want to support him in any possible way that we can. So by bringing in those productions here, once they start using up those, those two humongous spaces, they're going to go to Peter because they, they've just run out of space and they need to build those one or two extra rooms type of thing.
And then also further to a discussion that we had just about, you know, people think of studios as being to build a bedroom or an office, you know, the indoor spaces that people can't, you know, it's awkward to film in real ones. But you, we were talking about how studios can be used to augment outdoor filming if you're out of season.
Correct. So I mean, you could double up as a municipal building, which you're frequently not able to film in, for example, or a courthouse or a police station. Those one, those are the types of locations that are challenging to film in because they have a lot of privacy and protection around those types of buildings. So they could build interiors of homes, buildings, those types of things. But you're also going to have productions that are going to want to film something in the, that looks like winter in the middle of summer or vice versa. So a studio allows you to do that.
Jackson?
Yeah, just wondering if you have any, how many, maybe I'm missing something here, but how many jobs are the economic impact of this would be?
I don't have exact numbers, but I love that question and I can absolutely address it. But we currently employ, I think it's a hundred and eighty thousand people in film in the province currently. And we are thinking that we're wanting to grow that. People are passionate about this career. It's something that they want to be involved in and we want to support them in any way that we possibly can. Giving them full-time work is one of the ways to do that.
Great. Thank you very much. Good, good job.
Director Stamer?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just, just quickly looking at the difference between Site One and Site Two. It doesn't really, doesn't really say on Site One about the railway impact, even though it's pretty much the same type of, of situation. I mean, the railways on both. I'm wondering why that wasn't noted as well. There's a significant increase in price between one and two. Do you have any comments on that? Even though, I mean, they're both close enough to the railway that there could be vibration issues and sound and things like that. Was that just, was that just not added or? Because maybe the proximity of the properties are a little further away? Because I mean, there's a significant difference in price between one and two.
I want to defer to my All North people here.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the, the main reason there's a large price difference between one and two is, is the size difference between those two sites. Site one would offer an opportunity to either subdivide and sell a portion of that property or, you know, save that additional space for later use. I think we said we're twenty, yeah, just over twenty-one acres for that property, so about four times larger than what would be the minimum required for that particular site. And the reason we ended up with two sites that were in such similar location is because we wanted to explore the development costs of a greenfield undeveloped site as well as a brownfield site and just highlight some of the risks of redeveloping a brownfield site and what's And just highlight some of the risks of redeveloping a brownfield site and what some of those costs might be for rehabilitation. And potential environmental costs there. Um, to speak to the, the railroad question there, I think you're absolutely right that the proximity is similar. And they would likely have the same building constraints that they would need to build into the foundations to um, be able to work next to the railway. That way, and that would be the same for the Kamloops site as well. Um, the only site that we had, you know, a lot of our industrial areas are near railways. So the, the only site that would be free from that uh, within this study would be the, the ALR site that we did.
And then further to Director Hammer Jackson's question about employment, I mean, again, could you just talk about how a studio might help to get. An ongoing TV series and what a difference that would make to employment if we had. An ongoing series, the way you say Bates Motel filmed in the Lower Mainland Supernatural X-Files going way back. As opposed to depending on films coming in, which is obviously sporadic.
Mm-hmm, uh, so even with film, um, like movies, motion pictures, we lose some of those productions. They don't come here necessarily. They might fall in love with what we have for our landscapes and our locations. But if we don't have the studio space for them to build upon and, and stay in one location, it's a tremendous cost for them to pick up and move. Location, location, to location. So being able to do everything in one spot is ideal. Um, when they're able to hire local crew, they're able to capitalize on uh, the distance. Location tax credit that we have within our region. Um, so if they're able to employ at least seventy-five percent of people that live within our region, they're able to um, capitalize on that. Additional tax credit, which is amazing. Um, but it's also offering stability to those people that are working day to day to day. They know when they wake up that they're gonna go to work on The Good Doctor, or they know that they're gonna go and work on uh, Van Helsing or, or whatever the case may be. They know what their day-to-day job is, whereas currently um, they're excited whenever film comes to the area, obviously. Because they get to do what they love to do, but they're also having to work that second job and maybe they're um. Not able to get time off from that second job. So then they're missing that opportunity to work in film, which is something that they would be preferred to be doing.
As you might have guessed, film is a real passion of mine. Um. When Twilight Zone filmed literally a stone's throw from where my other day job is, I was just in seventh, I got a front row seat. For the filming of Twilight Zone, I was just awesome. Um, so just uh, based on Twilight Zone, I know I talked to the previous film commissioner about what the direct spend was. In the Ashcroft and Cash Creek area while they were filming for those, while filming for, I think about three weeks, but the setup and the takedown was several weeks. Additionally, could you talk about the indirect spend? So you know what the spin-off is for communities that have this come to their area?
Mm-hmm, so um, direct spend would include accommodations, um, uh, payment to the crew. Um, and then also um, what they're paying for food, that type of thing. Um, indirect is when the crew actually gets out and spends the money that they've just made within the shops. Um, it's when they become more aware of what's uh, tourist activities that you have to do in the area and then they come back for more. I've heard a lot of people that say uh, they come back to do their uh, uh, four-wheel driving. Or golfing or whatever the case may be, because they've discovered this um, beautiful Mecca that we have here. So tourism has been a, a huge um, one of those spin-offs that you could say.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments on what we've just heard about the site feasibility study? And this is now, you say you've had a few nipples about this, so you're now able to present this to potential investors?
Yes, yes, we have a peo- people who, who have been waiting patiently for, for these documents. So I'm super, super excited to get this into their hot little hands and we'll see where things go.
Great, well, if there are no further questions, then thank you very much, very exciting and look forward to further developments.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, well, I was sort of maybe trying to run out the clock a little bit because our other presenters are on their way. But have not obviously arrived yet. So if you'd like to take a five-minute break or so, get a coffee and have a chat. And we will reconvene when our two presenters from Ministry of Transportation arrive.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Our next presenters are here, so I'm pleased to turn the podium over to Graham Schimpf, District Manager and Sam Pantaleo, Operations Manager for Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. Gentlemen, thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you. Sounds like we're on, loud and clear. I'm not great with technology, but thank you, everybody, for having us here and welcoming us today. I just want to start out by saying we're here to, you know, what brings us here today is to talk about some unfortunate incidents which have resulted in the loss of life on the highway system. I want to thank all the first responders that are out there, you know, Sam and his team that that are out on the road when these incidents happen, as well as the road rescue teams, ambulance, RCMP and all that. So it is a subject that yeah, hits us, hits us at home sometimes. So just wanted to open with that and and thank everybody who's involved in these. So I'm Graham Schimpf, the District Manager for the Thompson Nicola District, and our area goes from Portia down near Hope, all the way up to Avola, out to the Cash Creek and then over to Monte Lake Turnoff. So big area. Sam's the Operations Manager for the Kamloops area and responsible for Highway Five North. So Highway Five North, the stretch that we're going to talk about here today is the stretch from Kamloops to Avola. It's about one hundred ninety-two kilometers that stretch. And we have been seeing a concerning increase in accidents along the route this winter, in particular, in the last couple of weeks. So for those who aren't maybe familiar with that portion of the highway, it is a winter class A highway, so it's our highest maintained winter route for volumes. The traffic volumes on the route range from about thirteen thousand six hundred in the Kamloops area around Halston here to about seventy-five hundred as you reach Hefley Creek and the highway goes from four lane configuration down to two. And then, once we get to Littleport, the volumes drop again to about just over four thousand vehicles per day on average. And then, when you got to Tejon area, you're about three thousand vehicles on average per day. And those are based on long-term counts that we've done along the corridor. Definitely going to see busier times, you know, some fluctuations in those numbers, but on average, based on a long-term counts, that's what we see on the corridor. We haven't seen increases on the corridor since two thousand sixteen, kind of as we expected, about like two percent growth annually. And then we have seen some increases based on some, you know, local construction activity in the area over the last couple of years. So those numbers have bumped up a little bit. Getting to some of the incidents that we've seen since October, we've seen about nineteen motor vehicle incidents on that stretch. Two of those have been fatal and those did occur within February here over the last week, in a week period. And of those, we've seen about seventeen of those involving commercial vehicles on the corridor. So just want to say that's, you know, not calling out causes or anything here, just, you know, they're the type of vehicles that are impacted in these collisions. We've looked at the, we have our engineers looking at a whole bunch of things on the corridor right now. And one of the things that we've looked at is we've gone in, we've pulled the last full five-year data set that we can. So that's about a twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one period, and these are based on ICBC and police collision reports. We are seeing in that data set serious collisions, which would be fatal or serious injury collisions trending down on the corridor. In that data period, we haven't seen any collision prone locations popping up on the corridor. We're seeing about sixty-one percent of those collisions are occurring between November and April. And interestingly, a lot of the serious collisions are occurring on clear, dry days with dry pavement. But just a reminder, that is a five-year data set that ended in two thousand twenty-one. We do have our team looking at the period from two thousand twenty-one onward. But because of just delays in the information, it is incomplete data set right now, but we are trying to get the as most updated information as we can. The, so in response to what we've seen on the corridor, so I'm shuffling my papers here. We have done a operationally, we've done engineering reviews that are underway. That's where I pulled, then just mentioned some of the statistics that we've seen. So looking at the safety numbers, the safety data on the corridor, we're looking at the traffic volumes. And we have both Sam and I have been on site with some of our local engineers to look at the areas where there have been the fatal collisions and the serious collisions. So those investigations will continue. We have our local engineers being supported by our safety engineers in Victoria. So lots of, lots of smart brains around the table looking at and supporting us in this. We've also stepped up in our operations and the oversight we do with our maintenance contractor. We've got our team out on extended hours doing more monitoring and auditing on the corridor, just to make sure that they are operating within the maintenance standards that we expect them to. And I can say that what we have seen is that they have been. The other big thing that we've done is we've stepped up our enforcement on the corridor quite substantially. Since February third is when we started, that was after the first fatal incident that we've seen. Our local teams, we had them focus a little bit on the corridor because we had been seeing that increasing trend. And since then, we've been starting to pull in enforcement officers from around the province to support. So there is, if you're up on the corridor, you probably noticed an increase in enforcement and we are seeing, we're very, very, you know, tickets being issued. Lots of speeding is happening. When we're seeing speeding, we're pulling vehicles over. And if there's any other infractions on the vehicle, they're being ticketed for, you know, any and all things that that we see on the vehicle. So.
Yeah, well, just add there on the maintenance front, just for those who aren't familiar with Arvo Road Maintenance, who goes from Kamloops up to McMurphy Station Road, so just north of Beedenby. And then, Emil Anderson takes over from there to Teddington.
Yeah, thank you. So that's kind of how we've operationally responded and some of the engineering things that that we have in play. Other things that we're kind of looking at, and these are, you know, that's spoken a lot to kind of the immediate, what we've been doing. Some of the longer things that that we'll be working on with our engineers is we are doing a speed review on the corridor. We do have to wait for bare and dry pavement conditions to do some of the assessments, so that will happen in the spring. We'll be looking at the feasibility of different technology, like variable speed limit systems, weather monitoring systems that can help us put, you know, road conditions on some of the DMS signs or the dynamic message boards that you see along the highway. We're looking at curve warning signage on the highway to see if that's appropriate or needs to be upgraded in any area. And then, you know, corridor signage at some of the areas that that we do know are, you know, narrower, windier, maybe don't get as much sun. So if there is icy conditions, they might hang around for a little bit longer. So lots of work with Sam and his team and our engineering group on those initiatives. We also have some policy review underway. Our ministers announced that we'll be looking into the mandatory use of dash cams in commercial vehicles and that would see if that could help with enforcement and on the corridor and, I mean, throughout the province as well. So so looking into that. And then, when we look at some of the infrastructure along the corridor, we're also looking at like our CBSE and commercial vehicle safety facilities along the route. Areas where we can get them to pull over and do the, do the commercial vehicle safety inspections or enforcement actions that they might need to do. So looking at those opportunities, looking at passing opportunities along the corridor to help with traffic flow and then also looking at some targeted curb straightening. There's a couple locations on the route. If you drive through well, you might know of them. And we are looking at opportunities to maybe straighten those out and improve sightlines. So. Yeah, that one looks like.
Yeah, no.
Is anything? Yeah, so that was, I kind of blasted through everything fairly fast there, but that was kind of the operational update we wanted to provide everybody at the meeting today. And if we can take some questions, if anybody has any.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for that presentation. All right, we've got Director Hayward, Director Onslow. Yeah. Hayward, Onslow. Director Hayward and Director Houghton, who, directors and Director Stamer. All right, go ahead, Director Hayward.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions to clarify. You said that we've had two deaths. What time period are you saying we've had two deaths on the highway? Two deaths? You said it happened on the highway? What timeframe is that, two deaths in?
Yeah, one was on February second.
But what, where are you starting that from? Because I know of two other deaths that happened in Binsula. I know of another one somewhere else on the highway. So two deaths is way out of whack.
Since October first.
So you're only going from October first?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, sorry.
That's, that's kind of a poor estimate of what's been going on on that highway because you're going by twenty twenty-one where data ended. And it was showing that the the rates of problems on the highway were getting better. And I live directly above that highway corridor, right above Exloo. I see down almost right to Fishtrap. It's insane. And I, and I know how many times that highway's been closed because of deaths. And I have friends who are first responders. So that's not good information. I'm sorry. I know you guys are just the messengers. But there's been way more deaths that we need to address since October is not good enough.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry, our, the presentation was.
That you are only the messenger and I understand that, but I'd like everybody else to know that there, it's a lot more serious than that. I drive back and forth from that highway twice a day, and I have been run off the road by tractor trailer units who get right up your butt and blow the horn, and I'm doing a hundred and twenty. So there is, it's seriously wrong. You guys are doing what's needed to be done, but don't stop doing it when it quiets down because it'll just come back again.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Director Onslow.
Thank you. I, I'd like your presentation that you've given us of the information of what it is that you guys are working towards and doing. But I wonder if you actually have concrete timelines for these things. So it's fine to come into a meeting here and all of our memories are probably not going to last another year, two years about this particular meeting. But what is the accountability and what is the timeline to actually accomplish and present or put safety controls in, like, what's the actual timeline?
Yeah, so right now, as I say, we're in the initial, like, we've kicked off a lot of the work that we're doing. When we're looking at, I mentioned like the speed review, that's something that'll happen when the pavement condition is dry and we can get out there. And then, from there, a lot of the work will start to happen, but it's, you know, a lot of the stuff that we're looking at isn't going to happen overnight. It, you know, some of it, when we start, you know, installing some, you know, static signs, you know, we can do that fairly quick. So that's something that we could look to for in the spring. But when we're talking about more of the technology aspects, like the digital message boards or curb straightening, those are projects that could take up to a year to complete.
Thank you. Next, I have Director Houghton.
Thank you. Good presentation, folks. I know we have a lot of concerns on Highway Five North. But we have talked, Sam, about five A from Merritt to Kamloops, the increased truck traffic. Same concerns as Director Hayward. The residents along the way actually are scared to drive that corridor because the amount of increased truck traffic that is not blowing up the coke coming down five eight and Utzford is just overwhelming. And I know you've gone and done some things. I understand you're putting sensors in the road in front of Nicola Ranch. That'll help. Even I met Sam and I made a presentation, Peter Walker and myself, on some possible changes and some things that we would like to see done safety-wise on that corridor. And try and stop this before deaths happen. We've had a lot of trucks going Shumway Lake, Trap Lake. And I was wondering if you could just update, if anything, on our proposal to you on five A.
Yeah, for sure. No, thank you. So the the way in motion, the sensors, you've been speaking to just north of Merritt, they're on Highway five A for sure. And yeah, thank you for the the package there as well. So yeah, just earlier this week, myself, my area manager and our program manager met on site with Long John's on it with Chili. Looking at these improvement topics that you brought forward. So we have engaged our geotechnical department, you know, for the, one of them's the chain-up area at the bottom of Cardu Hill there. So looking at slopes and the feasibility of putting additional weights on that area. So absolutely, we are engaging our engineering team and looking, looking these paths forward. You know, some of the curve straightens that are presented through there do present some environmental challenges, such as inhaling in, in, you know, Shumway Lake and what have you. So those, those will definitely present some challenges, but we are, we are looking at all the the options that were presented forward. I'll just add, we are also looking at signage improvements on five A as well. So refreshing all of the curve warning signs and doing a ball bank test along the corridor. So, you know, appropriate speed tabs along the the corners as well will be occurring this season once the pavement strike.
I want to follow up to that. In the future, the Ministry of Transportation and Highways have no future of doing what the residents along there want, which is the banning of non-local trucks. Your vision for the future is to keep truck traffic on five A?
Yeah, I mean, being a public highway, I don't think we are looking at a ban on trucks. We are looking at, you know, improvements that we can make. You know, it is an important route for the supply chain. So we will be, yeah, looking at measures to mitigate any of the concerns, but.
I know the residents are still asking me that or what's going on. So because I know there's a petition and a fellow been hired to do a consultation to get non-local traffic off that highway. So thank you for your presentation.
Director Stamer.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. I'd like to acknowledge that we've got Chief Lambrell from Simpers Nation, a couple of his council members with him, Kooch Jam. The reason I'm doing that is because we're all really concerned about, you know, what's happening on our highways and byways. Appreciate your opportunity to speak with us today. I have the opportunity to speak with the minister again on Monday with Mayor Blackwell, so I'm sure that I can keep it short and sweet, but I have a question. When we talk about maintenance standards, and I think there's a difference between existing maintenance standards and acceptable standards. So my question to you is, can these existing contracts be adjusted to improve our maintenance standards? And how would we do that?
Yeah, so we, we did a review of our standards in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and we didn't enhance our standards. That was, we looked at lots of different jurisdictions and we did increase, made them tougher. So right now, you know, I, that's the contract we have, and that's the one that our ops team administers. And I, our next opportunity was a ten-year contract with the option for a five-year renewal. So that would be the next opportunity to look at a change in the standards.
So as a follow-up, you're saying that no one has the authority to be able to review those standards and be able to increase the standards as such when we look at some of the existing challenges that we have on our, on our highways, particularly through the areas between barrier and our Kamloops and the North Thompson. And you look at some of the rock cuts and some of the areas that have not seen any significant improvement or infrastructure monies in probably twenty-five or thirty years, you're saying that there's no way even the minister can increase the amount of monies put into those maintenance contracts to increase that maintenance at this time?
I'm, I'm saying that the contract we have is the one that we have in place. And for some of the areas that you've mentioned, I mean, we have some, we've talked about curb straightening and opening up things and that's what we'll be looking at over the next little bit to see about improving the road conditions. Right now, yeah, I don't have a mandate to change maintenance contract standards.
Next, I have Director Hammer Jackson.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the times of when these accidents happen, when I do drive on the highways, I do see a lot of congestion. And I know that you went from keep right, except the pass signs and you've increased them and things like that. But when I'm on the highway, the biggest thing I see is when, you know, you've got an eighty zone and somebody's going consistently sixty or ninety and going consistently seventy. And I've just seen so many close calls of people that, you know, somebody that's driving from Vancouver to Edmonton instead of Kamloops to barrier. And I've just seen so much impatient drivers when getting in behind and a motorhome or something that's traveling way under the speed limit. And, you know, twenty cars behind and number nineteen has to get to Edmonton tonight, kind of thing, and they get impatient. So I'm just wondering if there'd be, if you're looking at your signing, I, I've even noticed when you did go to to larger signs, still people aren't paying attention. So I don't know if there's a way of maybe lighting it or making you more attention to it because and again, I don't know if these accidents are happening at that time, but when I'm on the highway, I see a lot of close calls, you know. So I'm just wondering about the lighting of that type of signer, if that's a problem or, or anything like that.
Yeah, so we will look at the signage that's on the corridors for sure, and also the passing opportunities. If we can provide more passing opportunities, it, it does help with, you know, people trying to get around slower moving vehicles and all that. So we have done passing lane improvement projects on the corridor in the last several years and have a few ideas where there might be some more opportunity.
Thank you. And next I have Director Stamer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned briefly about the mandatory dash cams. And to be clear, I believe it's barrier that's actually asked for that, you know, with our resolution to Silga, and we've been getting a lot of traction on that and some positive feedback. Also, the minister mentioned the possibility of variable speed corridors. It could be added somewhere in that quarter. Maybe you could share where that could be. And also, on the enforcement end of things, can you share the data and what, how many traffic infractions have been, been let, you know, have been ticketed in since the loss fatality?
Yeah, so with regard to the variable speed limit system, that's what our engineers will be looking at, the feasibility on where it might be appropriate, where it might not be appropriate, and then determining if it is appropriate on the corridor, what the extents would be. So we'll have to stay tuned on that one. With regards to the ticketing stats, we're averaging about a hundred tickets per week in our enforcement. So we're into our third week, so I'd expect we're in about the three hundred range for for tickets since the beginning of February.
And if, as a supplement, is that higher than you've seen in the past in relationship to the last fifty-two weeks?
Given that there's more enforcement, those numbers would be higher. Yes.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Smith.
And thank you for coming today and for your presentation. I have a question actually about, one of the things I've noticed coming in from, on the coke from Merritt to Kamloops is the crosswinds. And I'm wondering if that's something that you, I wonder if that's something that you warn about, or if you have any matrix for testing crosswinds, or if that's on your sort of radar at all?
Yeah, for sure. And we have our local staff usually like know the kind of the hotspot areas, and it could be, you know, that this time of year could be crosswinds. We're, I've been battling that the last couple of days with the winds we've seen after the snowfall. Up in some areas in particular, quite bad. And then, you know, different times of year, it's not so much crosswind, but it's rockfall. So between our local operations team and our maintenance contractor, they know the areas very well and monitor that and and deploy the resources to deal with those, you know, at the time of year when when we're seeing those occur.
And Director Getz, out there in the interwebs, I saw your hand up, but it's no longer up. Did you have a question?
Uh, no, it's been answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you guys for all the hard work you've been doing. I know we're, you know, we're pretty critical on what's going on in our highways, and we've got another looks like a significant amount of snow coming, but I want to thank you especially specifically on what you can do with the increase in enforcement with CBSE and the police. Obviously, it's, it's making an effect. It's unfortunate that we're still receive, you know, receiving a hundred tickets a week. I find that just an astonishing number. People are just not paying attention, but I want to thank you very much for your hard work.
Director Hall?
Yeah, just a question. I'm, I'm just curious whether or not the ministry is working with any of the companies, the trucking companies specifically, with education and training opportunities and be more proactive. I kind of feel that we can make the roads as safe as we can with signage, variable speeds, one up, unless we address the education and training of the people behind the wheels of those, you know, tandem trailer trucks, we're still going to have some challenges that we've heard, you know, from various individuals today. So.
Yeah, so our ministry works very closely with the BC Trucking Association, the West Coast Trucking Associations and you know, through those channels, work on the education and, you know, and helping out with some of the training aspects. That's, that's completed by our commercial vehicle safety enforcement branch. So a little bit outside of, out of my office, but but that's the avenues. And then, you know, yeah, we have good relationships with some of the local major carriers and helping them with their safety programs and all that.
Oh, wow. Okay. Okay. Don't not so fast, not so fast, putting them down. So I've got Director Houghton. Did I see Director Lepso? And Director Smith and Director Onslow. All right, Director Houghton.
Just a quick question. You said you'd be increased enforcement on, on five north, which I congratulate you for that. Is, are you still keeping to the same levels on five A at the Nutzford end and the Merritt end? I've asked you for more help on the Merritt end and getting the skies stopped before they head down the road to Kamloops. And can you just fill me on where we stand there?
Yes. So recently, we have been pulling officers in from other parts of the province, so we can get back in the initial days when we were relying on some of our local Kamloops staff. We did have to focus five north and we, we did pull out of a few areas, but over the last two weeks, we've been able to to start getting back to to that with the other enforcements that we brought in.
Thank you, Director Lepso.
Thank you very much. And this was more to the question that I asked the chair. So when I went up, I asked the chair if we were going to let the chief have an opportunity to speak. And I'm just wondering if the chair would like to share what her reply was.
Thank you. Yes, Chief Lamprou and his colleagues are here and there is a meeting between them and these two gentlemen and are you Director Stamer? No, there's a meeting with them afterwards so that they can, they were here to listen to the presentation and then they have their own questions and they'll be having a meeting with them after. Director Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question on the last two fatalities. Has there been a cause and a blame established?
No, we were waiting for the RCMP investigation to uncover any of the cause factors. When we're out on scene, we're primarily focused on, you know, establishing trap control, making sure that we're, you know, the scene is safe and that we're respectfully trying to open the highway as soon as we can, understanding there's a police investigation on. But we, yeah, our teams are focused on keeping the highway safe and being able to open them and maintain the safety while they're open, not so much looking at the, you know, the causal factors. That happens through kind of the RCMP and then we're filled in after.
So, so none of your activities that you've started since the two are are direct result of those two fatalities?
They would be, yes.
Thank you.
Director Onslow. Thank you. I just have a question regarding the increased enforcement that you guys have right now. How long does that typically last? Or what do you think the increased enforcement will look like? And, you know, it's okay right now if we do this enforcement for say a four-week period, but then what happens in a month from now? And we just go back to having the issues that we're already having?
Yeah, so we'll be working with our commercial vehicle safety enforcement branch on a transition plan. But I, but I don't know what that looks like at, you know, this current moment.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? No? All right. Well, seeing none, thank you very much again, gentlemen, for coming today and answering questions. And appreciate, appreciate you being here. I know it was a topic that was on the minds of many.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, then that brings us to the end of this committee of the whole meeting. So thank you very much, everyone, for being here today. And we'll see some of you next week in Kelowna, and then we will be back again in two weeks in this very building. So in the meantime, drive carefully and see you in two weeks. We stand adjourned.